Hi, I'm Hagan Haney and I wanted to tell you about Haney Realty and Property Management. It's my dad's business, but he has a lot of really nice and smart people who work with him. When people want to sell or buy a house, or some land, they call my dad and his friends at Haney Realty and Property Management. It must be a lot of fun because every time I see them, they're smiling. Haney Realty and Property Management is your best friend in real estate. Give them a call at 347-9150.
Have you considered a career in nursing? Nursing offers many options, specialties, and working environments. Nurses make a real difference in people's lives. Nursing degree programs exist across the country as well as online. Southern Tennessee Regional Health System Pulaski is seeking highly energetic and positive people who are looking for a career. STRHS Pulaski provides excellent compensation, employee benefits, and growth opportunities. Do you think you've got the right stuff? Contact nursing recruiter Dana Smith at 931-279-8509.
Hey guys, it's Tamika Russell with PES Energize. Did you know PES Energize now offers routers to their internet customers? Give us a call today at 931-363-2522 to start experiencing the ultimate wifi.
M&amp;M Staffing LLC is Giles County's locally-owned staffing agency. Owner John Brayden Harper, Cree Holt, and Mercedes Houston are from Giles County. They know Giles County and they care about this community. M&amp;M Staffing supports local schools, athletes, organizations, and causes. When you're looking for your next career or looking to fill a position, look no further than your locally-owned business, M&amp;M Staffing. Find us on Facebook, 450 Bennett Drive, or fill out an application online at m&ampmstaffing.net.
Pulaski Natural Gas proudly supports all Giles County schools, their students, and student athletes. Pulaski Natural Gas is dedicated providing safe, reliable, efficient, clean-burning natural gas to their customers throughout Giles County. While natural gas is colorless and odorless, a chemical is added to it that smells like rotten eggs to indicate leaks. Please make sure everyone in your family can recognize the smell of a natural gas leak. If you smell natural gas and would like more information, call Pulaski Natural Gas at 363-1753, and always remember to call 811 before you do.
Good afternoon. It is June the first. We are in the Central Office Boardroom. It is 5:00 PM and this is our monthly scheduled Giles County Board of Education School Board meeting. We will start off with the role. Mr. McAllister is not here. He is out of town on work. Mrs. McLeod.
Here.
Mrs. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Sumner.
Here.
Mr. Brewer.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
And I am here. If you'll stand, we'll have a moment of silence followed by the prayer and the pledge of allegiance by our heads. Please lead us, please guide us, please direct us. We love you, we praise you, we thank you. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item here, we have the consent agenda, the approval minutes from our May 4th meeting, also the May 18th special called meeting.
Mr. Chair, I would like to interject just a moment, please sir. We need to add, if the board is permissible, that we put amendment on J, summer programming allocations. The board needs to approve the receipt of those grant funds, but we also have a budget amendment to reflect the receipt of those. So if we could please add amendment to item J.
I have no problem with that. Board have any objection? Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Beard. We have Patrick Gilbert here from First National Bank with some cold hard plastic that turns into cash. Recognition of employees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Beard. Today I'd like to recognize, well first of all, I'd like to congratulate all the educators for a wonderful class of 2023, and hope you have a great summer and get the new year cranked off very well. But we would like to recognize our last teachers of the month, our educators of the month for the 23 school year. And first, we'd like to recognize Ms. Karen Gibson from Minor Hill. She's our classified representative. Sorry I have to mess a good picture up by being in it, but now we'd like to recognize And lastly, Ms. Laura Kelly from Giles County High School.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you for what you did.
As always, thank you. Thanks to First National Bank and Mr. Gilbert and these employees who obviously go above and beyond. Thank y'all. Congratulations to you guys. Under new business disposition of assets, as we saw in the work session, we had a list of textbooks coming from Richland High School. Mr. Blair asked that we dispose of them. We decided since they are textbooks and cumulative over $500 in value, or at least they were when purchased, that we would like the board to approve of this disposition.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or questions over those assets? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Under item B, new business, TCAT instructor welding contract and IT position. Again, as we went over in the work session, this is part of the Innovative School Model Grant Fuel Enrollment. Since it's grant-based, it does need to be approved. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Sir.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item C, Giles County High School Fuel Enrollment Welding Lab. This is also another item that's grant-funded. It is a purchase over $5,000, so we need to approve those funds and expenditure. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any questions, concerns, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item D, district fiscal year '24, the VPK Award Grant needs approval of acceptance upwards of $706,000 in aid. Entertained a motion to approve the acceptance of those funds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item E, ESER 2.0 revisions. Mrs. Monks spoke to us at the work session. We are, with those funds, we're supposed to document and reflect in minutes that we have looked at those expenses, solid categorization, which is what she went over with, with us catching us up on how they're being expended out and keeping us up with the dates on that. Since we worked on that at the work session, we need to reflect it in both, in the minutes for this and approve those revisions and update.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on ESER 2.0 update. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same goes for the ESER 3.0 revisions and updating expenditures and commitments. Need those, need that reflected in our minutes that we have in fact reviewed them. Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item G, best-for-all grant, same thing. There was, you know, with revisions, with updates, expenditures, the commitments that we've done, that grant has been totally expended, so that would be the update and final update on that one, I would assume. Need to reflect in minutes that that is the case.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item H, Perkins Reserve Revisions. Mr. Hammond went over this with us as it cleaned up, moved some line item numbers. Need to reflect in the minutes as well that we have basically self-audited ourselves Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item I, change order for virtual reality headsets. We did not discuss this at the work session. Mr. Hammond asked that we add this to it. This is grant-funded and needs our approval since the purchase is over 5,000. Mr. Hammond, anything need to be added to that?
No, this is recurrent with another grant, middle school grant. We use these. They've worked out successfully and they'd like to continue to use them in their current expiration space. Some companies offered to give us a discount for the life of that ISN grant for the 30-year notice due to 2026, so we need to run it through all the approval and accounting issues
Need, motion to approve the change order for the virtual reality headsets.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Item J, summer program allocations. We talked about some of this at the work session. Monies were still contingent, I believe, at that time. Is that right? And approval, and then Dr. Beard, you're going to add for the amendments, right, for budget?
Right. Just to reflect a little bit on this, we are, we do have a minimal number of students to be served, which is 314. Last count, we were well over 400 for our summer camps. Our economically disadvantaged target rate was 37.25%. Again, we were well over that ratio. Our allocation from the state is almost $400,000. That generally does not cover the staffing. They do recommend like a 1 to 13 ratio, and we try to do smaller when permissible. We do blend some ESER funds with that, and then we're allotted a transportation allocation of $71,327, and that's to help with fuel and paying the bus drivers because we, you know, it does require them to run routes during the summer. So that's the allocation itself. And then the budget amendment, and I spoke with Mrs. Marsungner this afternoon, and she said while we are amending for the summer learning camps, she wanted to try to get some cleanup items taken care of and hopes that we don't have to do another one, but just in case there is a possibility. But that's just showing where we're taking in the money for the summer learning camps and the transportation, how that would be distributed. Coordinated school health, she needed to move some money out of medical personnel to put in other supplies and materials to finish out purchases for the summer, our fiscal year. Leaks needed an amendment to reflect the revision in E Plan. We didn't use all of the money in the teacher line item, and so to get some extra instructional supplies and materials, that had to be amended so that that money could be spent for those instructional items. Regular instruction, we do have summer school going on at both high schools, which is separate from the summer programming, and this is to be able to move that money into 189 so that we can pay those teachers who are doing the summer school for the high school students. Special education, we're trying to cover any additional shortages that might have existed. We did have a little bit of shortage in substitutes, and, you know, month end has just taken place at the end of school, and not everyone may have turned in everything, so she was trying to allot for getting all of that information covered. CTE, again, there was a shortage toward substitutes, so we had to, transportation, there were a lot of field trips at the end of school. Once TCAT testing is over, they do go to the parks and do some fun afternoons, so that covers the extra duty and field trips that took place right at the end. And then pre-K, again, is substitute pay. There was a little bit of a shortage there, so we're just amending to make sure all of those things are covered.
I entertain a motion to approve that summer program allocation, those funds. We'll do that first. That is the 393-262-59 plus the 71-327-04 for transportation.
Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So then that slides into the budget amendments that you were given. You see that under the summer learning camps, and then obviously the items that Dr. Beard just went through for us. So I entertain a motion to approve these budget amendments as we've completed them this evening and as we've looked at them.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Great. Item K, gun safe proposal. As you know, we spoke about this a little bit at our school retreat, at our board retreat, and we've asked Sheriff Kyle Hilton here to just lead us down kind of this idea for a minute and make it official and what we can hopefully do.
Good afternoon. We have talked, like a couple weeks ago, or a couple Saturdays ago, about what we're wanting to do is put a safe, a gun safe in every school that, or all of our SROs have rifles, and, but they are in their vehicle. But we'd like to have a designated location in the school that this safe would be mounted, and the SROs arrive earlier than most of the students get there. They got a carry case that they would carry the rifle, lock it up, and it would be, you know, it would be more convenient to get to if needed. But then when they would leave their ship, most kids are gone, they would go carry the carry case out. And it would give us, I feel like, you know, hopefully it would be more an advantage if something ever did happen that they'd need, instead of trying to get to your vehicle.
Which is really part of no training. You don't, no police officer's going to run basically away from the danger.
Yeah. They're trying to, you're leading with their rifles, and, but we're just looking for any advantage in today's world that we live in that it could give them just seconds to, more seconds to get there quicker and respond faster.
Second, save lives. They absolutely do.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hilton?
I know there was talk about how do we secure or get these safes, fund them. I guess that would be the next question, you know, if we have any.
Well, if there's no funding, I've got some avenues that I can reach out to.
Okay.
That if it happens not to be any funding for it, I'll reach out to some help.
Okay. Well, maybe however our vote goes on this tonight, it's a vote towards maybe moving forward with looking at purchasing, how do we purchase and where and what style, and go through all that and start down that road.
And most of you have safes, the most of them are coded, and what I would, it'd be, and Dr. Beard and I can sit down and discuss if this, if y'all choose to pass this, is who would have the code do it, you know, who you would prefer if it's one more person, if something happened to that, to that SRO, that that's be a discussion, and plus we would, you know, we would probably need to do a policy, policy at our, at our, the sheriff's department for it also.
Right.
But if it does pass, we would, you know, if we could make this work, I'd like to have it before the new school year.
Anything else for?
It was one next door to me, and the SRO's office corner. They had a rifle in the vest, didn't they? In my case, that case, I was the second. I mean, I guess you could even have some additional training for that second person if that was feasible.
Well, you know, that's a discussion that the school system would have to talk about, and they would have to pass that, which, for anything for the safety of our children and for our teachers.
And I know Dr. Beard has already checked with TSBA, there's not any issues legally with us being able to do that, so there's no statutes, but.
I am aware of some school districts that, and other counties that are carrying them on backpacks. We discussed that, and I'm not, I'm not against what they do, but I just have some concerns that something happens that they, they just go to the restroom and forget to put it back on. Just little things like that that concern me, but that's the reason why the gun safe, I felt like was the best idea.
If you don't have any more questions for Sheriff Hilton, maybe we can put it in a motion form. Entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for gun safes for the schools and the, I guess what, putting that program and that policy together, because we will need to dot the i's, cross the t's, make those decisions, and maybe with approval of going forward, let's see, we'll have our next work session, and we can hash out the nuts and bolts, and we can actually take an executive decision on that if we need to in July, so that it can be approved in August if the board sees that as the direction that it wants to go. All right, I'll just dumb that down. Entertain a motion to pursue.
So moved.
Second.
Gun safe proposal. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Get them ordered.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item L, RJ Young copiers contract. As you know, any lease agreement must be approved by the board. This is for Ms. Mary Britton from Pulaski Elementary School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? And again, this is another timely piece, or else we would go through a work session There's no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item M was originally scratched through on the agenda at one point. Dr. Beard?
We, in discussing this, we feel like it'll be best to wait for the test scores to come back in full, which will be around September, October. More teachers would actually be qualified for tenure if we put that off, and as long as we do it within the calendar year, we're legal to do that. So we just thought it would be better to wait until we had a, we had one person who had been turned in for this, and I think waiting on test scores will be better for our teachers. More people will have the opportunity to qualify by putting it off till later in the year.
So then that will stay tabled, if you will, until we get those test scores back and can move forward. Just wanted to be transparent with that. No old business policies for first reading. Policy 5.310, vacations and holidays. We're just needing to add Juneteenth to our calendar. It is a federal and a state holiday. And again, this only affects our 12-month employees, but does not affect anyone this year, as that Monday is already a day off. You have the vacations policy in front of you with that new holiday added. Entertain a motion to approve policy 5.310, vacations and holidays.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 6.300, code of conduct. Remember, we have moved this to the June 22nd work session, and hopefully we got some new guidance and whatnot by then as well, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
If you saw your email, TSBA sent out the June policy recommendations, which is going to be quite a few changes, and it will, it will impact some of our code of conduct as well, so putting that off a little bit will help us have more information.
Item, let's see, under 10, policies for second reading. Policy 5.602, staff time schedules. Updated this as the current policy concerning overtime and staff schedule, so we're taking the new model policy into account here. And in doing so, we will be deleting policy 5.604, which was duplicated, and again, this is at kind of the leadership of Jennifer White at TSBA. So on policy 5.602, staff time schedule, entertain a motion to approve that policy as we've discussed. as we've discussed. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. And in reference to policy 5.604, that's covered in 5.602 now, and we need to just delete this policy altogether. Entertaining a motion for the deletion of that policy.
So moved.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. And as we've discussed, work sessions and other first reading, policy 6.4031, again, per Jennifer White, current policy needs to be replaced with current model policy, which is what we're taking from TSBA. Entertain a motion to approve on the second and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We are at Board Comments. Mrs. McClaff?
I don't have anything today.
I'm with, I'm almost with you. Mrs. Gordon?
Just thank you to everybody for a great year, and hopefully we can recoup for the summer and get ready to go again.
Be here before we not.
Mm-hmm.
Mrs. Weller?
Same thing, like you go right there, and I'm going to love it right here, so we have a great year.
Mr. Brewer?
Same here, is, you should say, regroup and reload, have a good summer, and teachers and staff, everybody, and come back next year, ready to go. Put a little more money in.
Little more money in. There we go. Yes, sir.
I just thank everybody. I got, I want to compliment Mr. Jake on all his grant programs. Last couple of weeks, I've been out in the field, I deal with all kind of people every day, and I guess this week really hit home with the trades out there. Everybody's not going to go to college, but there's other trades out there, a person could make good money and stay at it. I was at a job this morning, and it was about 15 block layers out there, mason areas, and talking to the older gentleman, he was 82 years old still laying block, and I said, "Won't you retire?" And he said, "Well, I'm trying to train this younger generation the skills of laying block." He said, "It's not the problem trying to teach them, it's the people not wanting to work," you know, and we all know that, you know. But like I said, welders, plumbers, electricians, I compliment you on getting these grants and helping out and hard work, because skills are the backbone of our country. Yes, we need doctors and lawyers and, and, you know, everybody else, but we also need other skills, but, but thank everybody for what they're doing.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, if I didn't, there it is, there's my paper. We still have our third grade retention issue stats, all that's still embargoed, we can't get real, but I'd reached out with, to Mrs. Sakowitz and talked to Dr. Beard on this, because we're all seeing the news and people who don't understand it. I shared with the board the Tennessee State Diagram for the Pathway Forward, and I like how it's talking about a pathway forward and not just sitting on retention. But I asked Mrs. Sakowitz and Dr. Beard if I could just put together what I saw in the data that I asked for, and just kind of what I've heard, and we've, you know, it's my understanding that, that children were, were, were spotted through their case MVP assessments. Principals were in great communication, which is why I think we've, what I see is a good result from it as opposed to other places. And nothing was taken lightly, and a lot of preparation has been in place, and so kudos to our central office staff and our curriculum folks and everyone, and the principals for all that. And it sounds like our MVP tests are prepping our kids probably a little bit more stringently than even the TCAP is. There, there, actually, some, a lot of them tested higher on the TCAP than that. But just to reiterate, we were 42% proficient, which was really good amongst our surrounding counties. I think we were third on a short, short list that we had put together, which, which was good. In the past, we'd been 30 to 32% on proficiency, so when the state challenged us with, "You guys are going to have to step up or we're going to hold kids back," which is basically how I felt at first, right? Our district, you know, up that 10 to 12%, so that says something. And then after the retakes that I heard were given at great times, at regular school day, there wasn't anything strenuous to a kid or any of them, you didn't even know who was retaking for the most part. Forty, now our proficiency went from 42 to 47%. And then if y'all looked at the Pathway Forward diagram, and you, you see that you can appeal, and there are other things that, that, requirements that can be met that basically exempt you from that, which if you're an English language learner and whatnot, or a reading disability, or whatever the appeal may, may meet, or even their test scores on Ames Web is another data point. If all of those were to go through the way that they kind of projected to be, we could stand at 63% proficient. And that's a, that's a heck, that's a heck of a number. So I just wanted to kind of put something out there that, you know, shows that our district took this very seriously, worked very hard. I think, I think parents and teachers did obviously the same, and then this is kind of, to me, our, our pathway forward. So I was excited to kind of be able to just hear, hear where we may be headed. And if you've seen the Pathway Forward, it's on the, it's also on our, on the school website. I'm sure it's been posted to Facebook and all that as well. Within a click or two, you can easily find out what your Pathway Forward is, and so kudos, kudos to our district. I think that was a job well done. Announcements, work session, June 22. And I slid in on my notes, the full commission meeting is June 29.
At 5:00 p.m.
At 5:00 p.m., so it's.
There is a public hearing, June 27 at 9:00 a.m.
Okay.
I did speak with Mrs. Moore Sumner about that earlier, and what that is, is anyone who might want to ask questions or make public comment has to let them know ahead of time that there is a public hearing, June 27 at 9:00, but full court will vote on June 29 at 5:00 p.m.
Got that. And then our next board meeting, again, remember, we moved that to July 13, and work session July 20, and then our next meeting, we will be back in school.
And I do want to mention, we still may need to do a cleanup budget amendment. We would have to do a special call meeting because that would likely be reflected. Since we cannot meet June 29 because of the county commission meeting, it may be that we have to put in a special call meeting just to do a cleanup. She feels like she's got everything taken care of, but just in case, she wanted me to mention it tonight.
That could slide in for.
Yes, sir.
20?
Maybe the 27th, that Tuesday night, so. Summer programming ends June 30. We had to postpone it a week due to the retake option being open till June 5, so we couldn't start camps until June 6, which starts next Tuesday. And then summer school for the two high schools ends between 3rd. They were able to start this week.
Meet the 27th?
Pardon me?
Meet what, is it?
Potentially. Potentially.
Is it pertaining to that date by chance? Okay. No, sir. We're there. Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.